Prior to board consideration of resolutions to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment will occur later in the meeting. Public comments shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. Unused time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons who speak once per public comment period. I direct the deputy clerk to enter up to the minutes of this meeting, this public announcement, and the advanced written notices of this meeting. Commissioner Echol?
Here.
Deputy Director O'Connell?
Here.
Commissioner Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
And Director Hobson?
Here.
Thank you, Erin. We will move on to the approval of minutes. I'm voting for a motion to approve the minutes of the public and conference meetings of January ten, twenty twenty-four.
Same.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention on the public.
Abstention is noted. Motion passes. We're gonna go a little out of order, so we are going to skip to our public hearing. We will now have a public hearing on resolution number two zero two four dash zero 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 six. Erin, please read the title.
Public hearing on resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash zero 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 six to exceed the county budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Would anyone like to comment on resolution number two zero two four dash zero 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 six?
We'll be signed up.
Seeing none, this public hearing is now closed. So I have a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two four dash zero 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 six on second reading.
Sure.
Motion by Deputy Director. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. Erin, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Echol?
Yes.
Deputy Director O'Connell?
Yes.
Commissioner Polian?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Director Hobson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, we will now move on to our recognition. Tonight, we are recognizing the prosecutor's office for all their hard work and dedication in keeping Burlington County safe and helping to reduce crime. Will Prosecutor Lucia Bradshaw and her team please come up front? And I'll turn things over to Commissioner Echol. Thank you. The whole team, someone else. The whole team, someone else.
Alright. Now y'all get to stand here while I say a few words. So, good evening. Tonight, we're recognizing our Burlington County Prosecutor's Office and the office's Major Crimes Unit for the extraordinary work they've done to help keep our residents and communities safe. I'll let Prosecutor Bradshaw and her team share some of the details in a minute, but I do want to emphasize the importance of all the men and women of our law enforcement agencies for their work to ensure public safety. Each day, our county's law enforcement officers go to work not knowing what the day will bring. They are willing to put themselves in harm's way to serve and protect others. They frequently encounter people amidst a crisis or tragedy, or when they are at their weakest or most vulnerable. And they are exposed to some of the most tragic and devastating incidents and crimes. We know it is stressful work and that it can take an emotional toll. That's one of the reasons why it's important to take a moment to shine a spotlight on them and their successes. Too often, it is only the bad news that gets attention and not the amazing services our law enforcement teams perform every day. They help keep our residents and communities safe, uphold our laws, and deliver justice not only for those who break the law, but also their victims and all others impacted by criminal actions and activities. On behalf of our entire board, we'd like to thank and congratulate the prosecutor's office and their Major Crimes Unit for their outstanding service, which has helped reduce crime and improve public safety across Burlington County. We are here to express our gratitude to them and to all our law enforcement heroes, both here and throughout our county, and we encourage our residents to do the same. We rely on all of you, and we want you to know that your service makes a difference and is appreciated. Thank you again. Prosecutor Bradshaw, would you like to say a few words?
I would. Um, good evening, everyone. I am so excited, thrilled, grateful for all of your presence here tonight. I want to first acknowledge and thank our commissioners here in Burlington County, Director Commissioner Hobson, liaison Allison Echol, our administration Eve Cohen, and I have to throw in Erin Kelly, although she's only a clerk, but hi, I'm no deeper Cowboys fan, so. Being a Cowboys fan in this part of the country, so I pull my support from wherever I can, so thank you. So, um, I'm so grateful again just to be here, such a wonderful occasion, and again, thank our county commissioners. I want to recognize Director Stephen Proketic from the Division of Criminal Justice who is here in the front row just to support you guys today because we know that the Attorney General's goal or mission was in accord with what we're trying to do here in Burlington County. And in my conversations with him, he has recognized our efforts and is here to support our recognition of you tonight, as well as Claudia Dimitrow, who is the deputy director at the Attorney General's Office as well. And she's here to support our efforts and just to recognize you all for all the hard work and dedication. So, thank you so much for you being here tonight as well. Uh, to be sure, any unit and every unit of our investigative staff are talented and dedicated to community safety and doing outstanding job. And so I want to thank those of you in the back. Uh, I see you, I recognize you, who are here to support our office. So, thank you very much for being here to support your colleagues. This group, however, has really distinguished themselves over the past eighteen months by bringing my vision to reduce gun violence in Burlington County to fruition. Let me take you back to July of twenty twenty-two at my confirmation ceremony to be prosecutor. Anyone here who attended that night heard me say these words. My first priority is to suppress gun violence. Burlington County had been plagued by increasing gun violence in the past few years. From January to June of twenty twenty-two, there had already been thirty-eight shootings and six homicides at the time I took over. I took office in July. Chief Thornton and I immediately began strategic planning with sessions with all of our local police chiefs to set new standards in how we would aggressively and thoroughly investigate homicides and shootings in Burlington County. Including amongst that was how we would aggressively investigate homicides and shootings referred to as no hits, where there are shots fired, but fortunately, no one is harmed. For example, a home, a car, or even a mailbox may be hit. Prioritizing those incidents, incidents like this before someone gets hurt, has allowed us to conduct intelligence-led investigations that result in obtaining substantial evidence, leads, search warrants that get guns out of the hands of shooters, and interrupt these violent gun offenses. In the last ten years, as we were discussing, I think, late in the office. I was just curious, and I asked the chief and the captain to go back over the last ten years. And apparently, in ten years, there has not been one year in Burlington County where there was not a homicide due to gun violence. But, that was until last year. And it's been eighteen months now. And we have those we're honoring here tonight to thank for. There are the boots on the ground, responding to scenes in the middle of the night to gather evidence, the faces behind the computers gathering the intelligence that we need, and the faces in court advocating to keep our streets and our counties safe. And tonight, we salute them for a job well done.
I just want to be very proud of the prosecutor's day. I could not be more proud of the Major Crimes Unit. Um, she's being a little bit humble today because after we approach the end of January, we're coming upon nineteen months without a gun violence homicide in Burlington County. We have seen an immediate increase of gun violence and homicides in Burlington County. I'll just go over real quick some quick stats. In twenty twenty-one, eighty-seven shootings and ten homicides. In twenty twenty-two, we had seventy-two shootings and eight homicides. In twenty twenty-three, we reduced shootings by twenty percent, having only fifty-eight shootings. And again, proudly stating zero homicides, which is a hundred percent decrease in homicides in Burlington County. So, in nineteen months, zero homicides. Um, all the credit goes to the hard-working men and women of the Major Crimes Unit who have got this done. We have seen this plague of gun violence impacting, you know, the entire country. And what they've done to address it is beyond words. Again, I just want to thank all of you guys. You made the job in the last year, nineteen months, that the prosecutor's been appointed to this position. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's hard work and dedication to this mission. Thank you.
Yeah, can you guys all?
I'll just say on behalf of the Attorney General, we cannot be more proud of the work you did as well. Thank you so much for everything you put into this. Prosecutor Bradshaw, your leadership has been extraordinary, absolutely exemplary across the board. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the hard work. I echo everything that you guys said before. We're so proud of you and Trent. We're so excited to be able to celebrate this incredible achievement. Hope you keep it up, and we're so grateful for everything you guys have done. So, thank you so much.
Okay, now we have sign. It says, Burlington County Commissioners honor and thank the Burlington County Prosecutor's Office for keeping our residents safe. We've got two of them. I can't see you at all. Okay, if you can't see me, I can't see you. Awesome. Thank you.
Prosecutor, Major Crime Team, thank you so much for all that you do. We truly do value you in Burlington County. Thanks so much. Very welcome. Thank you so much, Commissioner O'Connell. And then, as the room significantly reduces. We will now move on to public comments on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics, we'll have a chief to do so later in the meeting. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion. Um, I will begin with the names on the list, even if you're someone else who did not sign up to have an opportunity. The first name that I see here is Mr. Bruce Lopez. How are you, Liz?
I agree. I forgot to say, remember question last year, Happy New Year, two thousand twenty-four. And got to see my friends again. And I want to say something very special to Cosby, to our friend Devante. I've been seeing him over there.
Yeah.
I've been seeing Cosby.
Yes.
I hope I see him in several months from now.
Yes, indeed, indeed.
First question is, uh, you said the director? Who's the deputy?
Deputy Director of the AMO.
Oh, is that the same thing from last year?
No, last year it was Deputy Director. It was Commissioner Tom.
Oh, okay.
I was hoping you'd just switch seats.
Okay, uh, revolution at twelve, twenty-three, and revolution thirty.
Twelve is just assistance technology for, um, for senior citizens. It's just assistance technology program. And twenty-three? This is just an agreement with Burlington County Institute, um, technology for veterinarian, um, program for the internship and training opportunities for that period. January first, um, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. That's just simply that. And number thirty? So, we're decreasing the amount of a change order, um, for replacement of a structure. So, this is just us making a change to one of the authorizations.
And, uh, for your revolution, um, so, plug with him. Just curious about one little thing, if I would like to ask. What's the percentage you go to the open space?
On the public hearing that we already closed?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just curious, do you know?
Comment on that period. I do.
No, I just.
Have that answer, amount of public space?
You know, what percentage, I mean.
Uh, we'll have to get that to you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Uh, next, Ms. Maureen Taylor. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Maureen. Happy Wednesday, everyone. Uh, just wanted to clarify.
I'm sorry, your name and town?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Maureen Taylor Ford, one-one-seven Branch Street, Mahala, New Jersey. Uh, just some clarification on I twelve and thirty-two.
Um, what additional clarification do you need? So, this is just an authorization to amend a contract. This is for assistance technology with this particular, um, organization, Jazz Human Services.
Like what, what, what assistance technology? You're talking about like computers or what, or what technology on a level?
I don't have the memo in front of me. I forget what type of, um, technology it is, but it's normally devices, normally devices for most of the time that's spoke with disability. But I don't have the written memo in front of me. But we can get you that information. What was your other item?
Just curious, I've never, um, heard of a radio, radio tower. Wanted to know what that is, radio tower in Pemberton. Is it for like, it says emergency service communication antenna?
Is this supporting our nine-one-one, our county engineer standing up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Director. It's a compensation agreement with the Pemberton Volunteer Fire Company to compensate them for monthly electricity for emergency communications station that they're building in Pemberton.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Do we have anyone else for public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I am now closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to resolutions. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution I one through I eleven and I thirteen through I sixteen for unanimous consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polian. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolutions I twelve and I seventeen through I twenty-five for unanimous consent, please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain from I twelve. Motion passes. Commissioner Echol?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to make a motion to move resolutions I twenty-six through I twenty-eight for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Polian. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Polian?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolutions I twenty-nine through I thirty-two for approval by unanimous consent, please.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Echol. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We are now moving on to nomination and election of members of Solid Waste, um, Advisory Council for a one-year term effective January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do we have any nominations?
Yes, Director. Uh, with the approval of yourself and my fellow commissioners, I would like to nominate the following individuals to the Solid Waste Advisory Council for a one-year term. Mayor Florence Township, or Designey. Mayor Mansfield Township, or Designey. Nick Sedano. William Matulowicz. Kevin Sparkman. Becky Casper. Fred Brown. David Reich. Robert Reitmeyer. Kristy Osborne. David Specka. Eugene Fuzzy. Joe Greckley. Or Designey. Herb Conaway, or Designey. And Merrick Pat Rock, or Designey.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I am closing the nominations. Please vote by name. Erin, please conduct the roll call.
Commissioner Echol? Names is red. Deputy Director O'Connell?
Names is red.
Commissioner Polian?
Names is red.
Commissioner Singh?
Names ever red.
Director Hobson?
Names is red. Thank you, Erin. We will now move on to appointments to the Burlington County Agricultural Board. I'm appointing the following members to the Burlington County Agricultural Board for a one-year term effective February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The former members will be John Cubic, Paul Shin, Philip Prickett, Wes Johnson, Sherry Dukas, Steven Specka, and the alternate, the alternate will be Jeff Tilber. Public meeting, the public members will be Kevin Sparkman, Ila Vazallo, Ed Cohen, Randy Rothmuckmel, I apologize for mispronunciation, Brian Listini, Allison Stout, and the alternate member will be Stephanie Kreiser. Do we have any questions from the media? Do we have any questions from the media? Seeing none, I'm closing this agenda item. We will now move on to public comments on non-agenda items. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and full, um, address for the record. And I'll read from the list that has already signed up. And if you did not sign up, you, I will call out once we have our last person. Our first person is Mr. Fern, um, you, I'm sorry. You're calling up. Olet, thank you. I couldn't pronounce. Is this, is your first name ending in a D? Or, eh, 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 N? Fern?
Fern.
Okay.
It's short for Fernando.
Fernando, got it. Okay. Hello, how are you?
Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Uh, what brings me here this evening?
I'm sorry, just something in town for the record.
Okay, Fernando Le, two-twelve Rankoakis Avenue, Delanco, New Jersey. I guess over the past couple weeks where we've had, uh, some storms, we had rain and then we had the snowstorms. The bridge between Riverside and Delanco, uh, which is located at North Pavilion Avenue on Riverside side of the bridge, on Route five forty-three, and then on Delanco side, it's Burlington Avenue. The flooding seems to occur, uh, on Riverside side of the bridge, and it has to do with the storm drains that are there. We experienced some things, something similar over in Delanco, uh, on Hickory Street. And what we found as part of our cure for that was putting a duct built at the end of, uh, the store drain that dumps into the Rankoakis Creek. And so, when the high tide comes up, the bill closes, so water from the river or the creek, uh, won't, uh, flow back into our streets or come up through the store drains. And that might be a solution to, for the engineers to take a look at. But it's my understanding that either the Bridge Commission, or because it's Route five forty-three, that may be, uh, county responsibility. And budget-wise, I think, uh, it ran us around seven thousand for this duct build that we did over in Delanco to help alleviate one of our problems. So, if the commissioners could direct the, uh, county engineer or refer to the Bridge Commission to see if that could be a possible solution to the flooding that occurs there. When, uh, Route five forty-three on, uh, over Riverside floods, all that traffic that normally handles or comes through Riverside and into Delanco gets detoured back out to Route one thirty, and then they end up taking Bridgeboro Road, uh, the junk handle there, or Route six twenty-six. And we end up with, uh, large traffic backups there out on Route one thirty. It's already bad normally when we don't have, uh, an emergency or have a good deal with flooding. But this impacts that. Also, uh, from a cost standpoint, every time that bridge has to close, the Bridge Commission has to send folks out to man that. And so, we're spending probably over twenty dollars there. So, again, I would ask that, uh, you ask the engineers, uh, the county engineers or the Bridge Commission to look into that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. We will do just that. You got all of that county engineering, okay?
Unfortunately, Director, I'm very familiar with the situation. And I actually, when I was in private business, I did study for the Bridge Commission, and the tide gates don't work. The areas surrounding that whole area connects at eight feet. So, it actually comes over the bulkhead and runs all the way around the roadway. I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the folks from the Bridge Commission to talk about some advance warning associated with the flood.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for the quick response.
Um, next, we have Mr. Luis Lopez.
Good evening. Happy New Year again. One new word in India.
Sorry, just for the reference.
Oh, Luis Lopez, ninety-eight, Level Five, Mahala, New Jersey. One new word in India. It's beta, meaning sun. See, I keep learning one new word. Uh, second is, uh, the storm we have, is there any major damage, I mean, to one, I think, uh, to the person who got stuck and dug around? So, he's, uh, he's okay, I mean, every time you fire it up?
Everything is okay.
Yeah, there were no, there was no injuries to any persons.
Okay, I just want.
Or property, at least. But thanks for this.
And, uh, and, uh, this company here, uh, there any, like, any changes in, like, uh, like in the Health Department? Any new things, like, uh, COVID just still not dying down? You know, I mean, any, like, any cases?
I mean, yeah, you mean as far as has there been increase in COVID?
I'll go ahead and.
Just the COVID.
Like, uh, flu vaccine?
I mean, we don't, we don't have that information readily, but there has not been an uptick, if that's your concern.
We're still offering flu and COVID vaccines, and all that information is on the Health Department website.
Okay, and, uh, I would so like to see Mr. Ervish here, I mean, the director, uh, uh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Doctor Conaway?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, he, he's not here right now.
And I, for one thing, I've been working in Birmingham, I love seeing, uh, the supervisors to the Highway Department over and say hi and stop and greet me like a number of people.
That's right.
I wish I could say for everyone, but I just love seeing everyone. I love, you know, Mahala, I mean, I love Burlington County, but that's a best city. And I hope I could see you again. Wanted, uh, there's, uh, no, I mean, that's not, but a few cases, it's, it's none in this county, right?
What cases?
Yeah, few cases.
Yeah. Uh, Monique's here from the Health Department. She needed Doctor Conaway.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Um, Monique, I mean, you're asking in general, do you have some cases? I mean.
No, 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 but all the part of Jersey, I would say, it's going, you know, it's going bad. I would say, I'm, I'm just wondering if there's something going on.
You know, Burlington County Health Department has an app that you can download to get all of this information.
Oh, okay.
There's a Burlington County Health Department app that you can download on your, one of your two phones.
I saw that.
Is readily available to you.
Uh, uh, like I said, I'd love to see everyone. And, uh, keep up the good video, Mr. Singh. I love to see the new video from YouTube. I'm proud of him. I'm one of your viewers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next, we have Mr. Frank Pinto.
Good evening. My name is Frank Pinto, four-twenty Highland Road in Mansfield Township. My opinions expressed here tonight are solely as a resident of Mansfield Township, not as a member of the Township Joint Land News Board. Tower Gate development, which you may be aware of, off of Route one thirty north adjacent to County's, uh, Crystal Lake Park, came about as a result of a builder's running lawsuit for Mansfield's failure at the time to be in compliance with their affordable housing obligations. Five hundred and sixty unit residential development consisting of four hundred and sixty-four market rate units and ninety-six affordable units were agreed to in the lawsuit settlement, which was later approved by the courts. At some point subsequent to that approval, the developer proposed a different option for the site, which was to remove the four hundred and sixty-four market rate units, keep the ninety-six affordable units, and bookend the affordable units with two warehouses totaling approximately eight hundred and ninety-two thousand square feet. The three basic principles of citing affordable housing are: don't put it on the periphery of municipality, put it in an area where amenities are accessible, and incorporate it within the general population of the municipality. The original approved development already ignored the first two of these principles by putting it on the municipal border and not close to any pre-shipable amenities. With that said, the original design at least placed the affordable housing units together with market rate units, blending the development population together. Current proposal isolates the affordable housing residents from other township residents. What's worse is that places this already at-risk population in a warehouse industrial park. In this day and age, who would think that this would be a good idea? Why don't we just put it next to a landfill or an incinerator? This is clearly, in my opinion, a social justice issue. You already have a marginalized population. You are putting them within industrial park, exposing them to air, noise, light, and other pollution that goes along with such an industrial complex. You're also exposing the residents to significant tra- traffic safety concerns. The affordable housing section of the development fronts on Concordia Road, that being the only access to and from the residential units. There are no planned sidewalks for Concordia Road. Thus, expecting residents who may not have cars to either walk or bike to Route one thirty to access public transportation or amenities, or into the village of heading on a road with no sidewalks and limited shoulder areas. To add insult to injury, the current plan calls for a multi-use path, walking, biking, et cetera, leading from the affordable housing units through the warehouse industrial park, walking along truck driveways and crossing truck driveways in two separate locations to access Crystal Lake Park. These crosswalks are not proposed to be signalized. How can anyone think it's a good idea to have pedestrians and cyclists, all, in all likelihood many being children, having to pass through an active industrial complex with trucks coming and going to access Crystal Lake Park? Again, what are we thinking? The township justifies this change as being advantageous toward municipal taxes by eliminating the market rate units. I understand that. However, it's my opinion this does not justify the further isolation and marginalization of the low and moderate income population that will reside there. Township and county have some responsibility towards these future residents in that they should be afforded a safe place to live and a place where they can feel like they're part of the larger community. Therefore, it's my opinion that it would be best to keep the original all-residential development that has already been approved by the courts. To summarize, current Tower Gate proposed plan calls for ninety-six low and moderate income units to be located in an industrial complex that consisted two warehouses and all the safety and environmental concerns that go with such a complex. The plan also does not allow for safe routes of passage for these residents to Route one thirty, the village of heading, or in Crystal Lake Park. Finally, this plan further isolates our less fortunate population away from the rest of the residents of the community. Understanding that the county has little input in this matter, I would hope that the county at a minimum, would consider making a statement in opposition to the creation of such a social justice concern that will result if the current plan is approved and implemented as proposed. If anyone would like to see the proposed site plan for this development, please see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Mr. Rob Talan.
Bob Talan, twenty-four fifty-four Axe Factory Road, um, resident of Mansfield, but my mailing I just supported him. And this is more on the, um, the site that, uh, Frank was just talking about. There's a historical element on that site that I think is very important. It ought to be looked at, um, besides the points, uh, people bringing up. I had, living near the, not only a little more than a mile from this area, I, um, didn't realize the significant history there. That property that we call Crystal Lake Park was once called Mount Hope. And a fellow by the name of William Biddle, in sixteen eighty-one or eighty-two, got the property in a land grant, which was five or six hundred acres at the time. He brought three slaves over from Barbados when he came from England. He was a Quaker. And they are the ones that started that whole farm that was through there. There's now our Crystal Lake Park and this property that's contiguous with it, that will be, part will be impacted and really do away with the western sunset beauty. You won't see the sunset anymore. You'll see a warehouse. But all, when all that happened, um, happens, coming in front of our planning board during, because of the settlement, none of, um, a lot of the environmental impacts and all that, our township really doesn't have much say in, defaults to the, um, state. But the history part of it, we are allowed to address, and I will address that at our planning board, but according to the, um, a website called, um, it, a, um, wait a second, sorry, guys, I'm just going over here. There's a website that is about William Biddle and Thomas Biddle, his son, of one of those jester websites, and it talks about there is a slave and Indian servant burial site somewhere that could be on this property. It could be somewhere else. But what I would like to ask our planning board, I don't know if you guys could have any influence, because I'm sure the developer won't want to do it, large search, the historical records, and a geophysical search for a possible graves area that's mentioned in this history that, um, would be in that area. I'm very concerned because it's not giving credit and it's forgetting a part of history. And then there's just a recent thing that was passed called S-three-six-six-seven at the federal level called the African-American Burial Grounds Proud President.